Well, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the Dover School Committee of October 27th to order. Any community comments this evening? There being one. We have a very full agenda, so I will try to keep us moving along. But I always find this is one of the richest agendas that we have. And here's a little bit on here. There's something for everyone on here, I guess I would say. So we'll dive right into the reports and Ms. Dial.
Thank you very much. In my report, I just wanted to highlight two areas. One is our, excuse me, science professional development, which is scheduled for five sessions over the course of the year, collaboration with Pine Hill. So we had our first session in September, and it's very, very helpful. Deb lined up a lot of outside experts as well as internal experts to guide us along the way. And that's been led by a combination of our professional learning community leaders, as well as Deb and some other folks. So that's been really helpful. So I didn't know if there were any questions on our professional development. The other thing I wanted to highlight was progress on preschool playground.
Are there any questions on the other department's report before? Okay, perfect.
So we had a conversation at our last school committee meeting about the preschool playground. So we have more detail to share with you tonight. We've been working very closely with a playground expert who has developed the preschool playground at Pine Hill. So what you have in the packet is the different items, and it's been split into what could happen this fall and what could happen this spring, all dependent on the funding. So in essence, what we would like to do this fall is to retrofit the existing small climbing structure that is there, so that it is appropriate for students aged two to five, and that's all regulated. Take up the existing structure, which is required when we do the retrofitting, put down some temporary material on the bottom area, and put in some other equipment there. And then the majority of the work actually would happen in the fall. So if we were, I'm sorry, thank you, the spring. So the overall project is around $50,000, and the fall costs are around $15,000. The spring costs would be around $35,000. So we wanted to make sure that you had the details of what's being proposed, and also wanted to inquire whether there's any support or funding to be provided through school committees, so that we know how to proceed in raising whatever other funds we would need for that. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Can I ask, what does "poured in place" mean? Is that just my lack of playground building?
That's a good question. So the surface that's out there now is a poured-in-place surface, so think of pancake batter.
Yep.
And they actually pour one layer of it, and it has to stick to the edges, which you see about the timber edging. It sits overnight, and then they pour a second layer on top. It's kind of that compact rubberized surface.
So the same as the existing playground, that kind of surface?
Yep. It actually doesn't have to be quite as deep as the existing playground, because the structure's always high, so it'll be less expensive.
Have you had any luck with any other funding sources today?
We do have a parent contribution, which is currently going through PTO, has not been formally accepted by the PTO board. That's expected to happen in November. So we have that, we have that amount, which is about $7,000.
Okay. I think as far as funding the existing playground, we haven't contributed, the school department hasn't contributed anything. That's been all privately funded by the PTO. I think what I could throw out for the committee to consider to take some funds from would potentially be the pre-K revolving fund, because that money is the revenue, the tuition for the preschool that is sort of designated for the preschool. And if this playground is just for the preschool, you know, there's a little bit of leadway there. I don't personally think I'd be comfortable using any of our other funds at this point for just a small program like that. I'd rather use the building fund and our gift fund for larger, the ones that encompass the whole school. To any particular expenses, the first year, because we were going to wait and see like what the revenues were, and see how the preschool was moving along, and what other expenses a preschool potentially would need. So I don't know if there's any other operating expenses of the preschool that has come up now that the program's operating. Nothing? Okay. So there's a little bit of leadway there. We wouldn't obviously have to contribute, so.
How much would be in that fund going by June?
I think about $40,000.
That's expected.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to deplete, I don't know if we want to deplete the whole thing in the first year necessarily. So that's something not to consider. I guess I go back to just personally, just the need to rush into doing this, seeing that the program is so young, and I, you know, is it going to be long, you know, are we going to be at long term? Because I think Pine Hill's been in operations now for, I don't know, 10-plus years, and they're just now doing a playground. So that's something else I sort of throw out for the committee to think about.
Do you think, like, are playgrounds, they could already use though? When they came in, right? Is there space that they?
They utilize the space, there was Daisy May for kindergarten.
So at the, sorry, at the moment, are the preschools are using what space? Is there anything that would be appropriate for them afterward?
The small climbing structure that's designed for students aged five and above.
The one that's ripped off?
Yes, right, right. So on the far side of the walkway that goes around the school, that is there, with a rubberized surface. I mean, we currently have a snow fence up around it to designate the area.
Oh, okay.
Right.
My question is actually a little bit of an obstacle. I mean, I agree with Dawn about maybe going a little slower, but I was also thinking if, you know, we're at 16 students for the area, would we foresee maybe having more than 16 students at some point? And if we're doing it now, would it make sense to make the space even bigger? Which is the opposite of sort of what you were going with.
But if you have two classrooms, you probably would rotate the spaces.
If you rotate them, okay.
Yeah, I hope you'd ever have everyone all out there.
I was just thinking, while we're doing it, if you made it slightly bigger, what's the incremental cost of doing so? But if you rotate the classes, that would work as well.
Thank you. We did discuss that, wanting to be flexible for the future. I think one of the reasons we did really want the preschool in this year is because we had projected that, kind of, we had a guaranteed need for the next three or four years, given the students that we have, that we know we have. So in that sense, I think that there will be a need for at least the next couple of years.
I'm just wondering from a parent's perspective, when you're shopping for preschools, and especially if we're going to increase tuition next year, if we, if parents will be looking for something that is, you know, more bells and was dedicated, if that's part of our selling point. I know when I was in for preschool, it wouldn't have been, so I think just taking that as a marketing incentive.
Right, right.
Well, for me, I think it's not, whilst I think that's true, given the demand that we had, we're probably, we're probably in a situation of very fortunate that we have all much more demand than we have places. It sort of, to me, it comes down to $50,000 is a lot of money, but it's not in the grand scheme of our budget in the school, it's not a huge amount of money. And given the fact we have a particularly ring-fenced fund for this, whilst likely we're doing, we shouldn't fully drain it. But I think we have the funds to make a meaningful statement, something that's very, very appropriate for what's been added to the school. And it probably, I would suspect symbolically, this would be very important to staff and administration and the community.
So the temporary, I'm looking, there's a lot of dollars here for this temporary surface. Now, is that temporary that you're putting up, that you're going to be building upon the next time? Are you going to get rid of temporary and do the poured-in-place?
Temporary winters us through. So one option would be to wait and do everything in the spring, so you have to wait till the thaw.
Right.
So you could save some, you could save about $5,000 in the temporary piece.
Yeah, so temporary, right. I mean, that's where, if it's not getting us ready for the spring, that's $5,000 putting down and then turning off, right?
I don't know what the timing would be between tearing up, and then you have to do surface prep, and then the pour. So we would probably lose the playground for several weeks in the middle.
But we'd lose it anyway, then, right?
You'd lose less time to tear up and put the temporary in, but you're right, we would, yeah, we're going to, either way, we're going to lose it for part of the school year.
I wonder about the teaching, how does that work with PTO contributions to that?
Have you spoken to PTO about how, what they'd like?
We looked into that over the summer, and they said they would be happy to help us with any parent donations and with a small contribution. But all of their fundraising and their planned income is already earmarked for curriculum enrichment. So they said they could not help us with, like, say, a campaign to raise money for this.
Which I understand. All their energy's in the auction.
But there is a small donation earmarked?
Yes.
Is that where you have to tax right off? You can dedicate it to the PTO.
I think they should say, in addition to the parent donation, there's a small PTO.
But it is a funding vehicle for parents to be able to make a tax-deductible donation specifically for this purpose, if they do it through the PTO and it's specifically identified.
Thank you.
So Deb, what did you say, just the last thing, you just mentioned the auction, I didn't hear.
When we talked with PTO, we had a number of conversations with them, fabulous conversations. And they went back to the folks who were in PTO at the time of the original playground, and they did a number of budget adjustments. They peeled back their curriculum enrichment budget, did a specific fundraising for the playground. They are not prepared to bet this year. All of their energy's in the auction. That's why they go and search, they don't feel they can go out and ask people for playground money, whether, you know, paying their fees.
Auction money.
Ask, ask, all into the auction.
Bill, do you have a comment?
A couple of observations. Laura and I have had an opportunity to talk about this. I think the plan is a good one, and over the long term, I think it's wise to have a pre-K kindergarten separate play structure. I think the pre-K program, it's fair to say is here to stay. Having a pre-K program is, I think, is very important. The work that was done last year around the planning and showing the financial advantage to having a pre-K program was very clear. And the district will be in a position to have thousands and thousands of dollars in cost avoidance going forward by having established the pre-K program. So I think it is appropriate to have a spot for play that is for the pre-K. My observation about this plan is, I think it's a good one. It's, I think it's, it's very, how do I want to put this, very fault. And given the cost, about $5,000 for the temporary surface, that's 10% of the total budget, which I think if we can, if there can be a way to plan this, may take a little longer to do it, but to save 10% of the cost, I think, I think is, would be a good strategy. And so my suggestion, I guess, is to continue with the fundraising. We're already at the end of October. You know, we're all keeping our fingers crossed that perhaps pre-K kids can, could enjoy that structure right through the winter. But odds are that there'll be a significant time when they won't be able to be outside. So waiting, waiting a few months longer and avoiding the winter, avoiding the cost of that temporary surface, to me, makes sense. The other thing I would suggest in going down that road is perhaps go back and just have another conversation about the size. And I know 75 square foot per student is, is one of the standards, certainly that the architect feels is, is significant. I think 1,200 square feet is a lot of space, and, you know, if you have 20, 25, 30 kids out there at the same time, it may be a little tight. But there may be a way to just at least look at the possibility of a slightly smaller space, again, in order to look at what that might mean to the budget. And then this also gives the school committee a little extra time to take a look at possible resources out of the pre-K tuition, and maybe some other places to help supplement, I think would be a fundraising drive to try and make this happen.
So if we were to set a target for fundraising for families, I just, we'd work this out later if you wish, but I just wondered how to, how to set that target for fundraising, taking into consideration anything else.
Right, so I mean, I was thinking, my mind was thinking like, you know, 20,000 is what we could use potentially.
Very, very much appreciated.
From the revolving fund.
I have a clarifying question regarding that. If we use money from that revolving fund, unlike donations from the PTO, do we just send this stuff out to the?
It probably depends, if this is coming from, if, I don't think the one, there's not one contractor doing this whole thing, there's, I think there's like three, so I don't.
Yeah, so first, even if the money is being donated, this is a structure that's being built on public, publicly-owned property, the public bidding laws still apply. So if there was a group that was completely paying for it privately, paying all the expenses, as opposed to having the money flow through the district, that might be a different story. The public bidding laws might not apply. So I don't, I don't think that's an issue. And then, again, depending, as Dawn said, depending on how all the costs break down, if there's, if there's a, you know, if there's a contractor that is doing more than $10,000 worth of work, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, we have to, at a minimum, obtain, well, between $10,000 and $25,000, three written quotes.
I'd just ask one last question on the revolving fund. So in the course of a year of the life of the classroom, if there's just the one class of 16 children, we expect that that class to generate $40,000 over the course of the academic year, is that?
That's what they're forecasting for this year.
Right, so, but we don't have any reasons to doubt that it'll be significantly different for subsequent years. So.
There will be years when it varies, because the goal is to keep an integrated preschool classroom as close as you can to a 50-50 split between students with IEPs and students without. So there will be some years when that classroom may be smaller. We have a large group this year. We have a large group of special education and tuition-paying students, both. So my experience with the preschool over the years at Pine Hill is the numbers each year fluctuate somewhat. And there will be years when there are fewer students, and years when there are more.
Okay. But I just wanted to understand, there'll be a quasi-in-UFC of that amount of money coming in?
There'll be, yeah, contributions year over year.
So I just, it's a small, relatively small, but I'd probably be willing to be led to be a little bit above 20,000, just because of that, but I can put that point not going by the.
That's fine. I mean, that was a starting point to throw out, and I think what we'll do too is go back and see with the budget, if we take away all the temporary work and look to move, you know, do the work in the spring, what those numbers look like, and then what other funding sources you have, and then we'll see, you know, where we are at that point. But I think that we have enough to offer, that we can probably get it done.
Thank you very much.
And I agree with Brooke, it's an important piece to show when people are trying, so, you know, looking at other preschools, so it's an important thing to do.
Do we need a motion of support?
No, I think just some verbal support right now, until we have something more definitive to take a vote on, it's probably safer.
Okay.
Anything else from Laura?
Thank you.
Then move to Terry? Or did you want to do something?
No, no, when we have people have questions, I, between Terry and Laura and I, we might be able to answer.
Okay. Any questions on the Assistant Superintendent's report? Okay, Terry for the special ed report?
Yes. So as you probably saw in Laura Dial's report as well, we have hired an interim team chair for chickering, and we are very pleased. Christine Cronin Tossi started with us yesterday. She comes to us with a number of years' experiences, both a special educator and a team chair in the Arlington Public Schools. We are very excited to have her on board. She came in yesterday, and I spent some time with her, and we'll spend some time again with her tomorrow morning. But she's going to do a fabulous job. I think she's going to be doing really, really well. We're very glad to have her on board.
And is that an anticipation just, a position for just this year?
Correct. And so we will begin in early spring, advertising and interviewing for permanent.
And that's the appropriate time to do that, when people are starting to think about other options?
Exactly, yes. I'm confident we'll find a very good fit for our permanent position, but we are thrilled to have Chris with us. She's got a wealth of knowledge and experience that she brings with her, so I think it's been a really good fit. The other exciting thing that's been happening is that last year we had the opportunity to pilot the Google Read and Write program in many of our buildings, and in collaboration with our technology department, we have now a license that allows all students in all four of our buildings to access Google Read and Write, both at school and at home. And teachers are very excited. We also have some professional development plans to go with that for teachers. Many of our teachers that are using Google Read and Write regularly in their classrooms, so we're very excited about that. The other thing that's been happening is that we have gotten notice that all three of our districts will be going through a full coordinated program review. So all of our documentation, it's now a web-based program that we use to submit documentation, is due in May, and the onsite visits from the coordinated program review team will happen in the fall of 2016. So I will keep school committee updated as those dates approach. And, you know, Dover, the last full coordinated program review that Dover had, there was not a single finding from the team that came out, and so I am fully confident that we will do very well with the process again. The full coordinated program review is every six years, and then in between, they do a mid-cycle review, so every three years they do a mid-cycle. So they come in, if there were areas of concern when they did a full coordinated program review, they would review those again. There were none for Dover, but we did do a mid-cycle process three years ago.
Since, it might make sense, so that Terry may not have to sit through the whole meeting to jump to the pre-K tuition. So if we go to item number nine, Terry's provided with us, for us, a proposed tuition increase. And if you remember, when this came to us last year, we really didn't have an opportunity to really talk about the funds, because they needed to get things going. So she was gracious enough to relook at it again, and has proposed some new rates for history year 17, and have the comparisons too for the private, private and public around us that I'll turn over to Terry to discuss.
So again, as Dawn said, when we originally proposed the preschool, we used the same tuition base that we've been using in Sherburne. And the Dover School Committee wanted to take a look at increasing tuitions for the upcoming year. The increases of proposed tuition rates that you see there represent an approximate, they are not exact, because the numbers that we've used for tuition over the years were originally based on a daily rate, and that's why they're, you know, in 67 cents. So they are an approximate 2% increase over what we have had, looking to sort of stay in the middle of where private and other local public preschools are for tuition ranges. You know, we don't want to be necessarily at the top of the tuition range when you look at the area of private preschools and things. So the tuitions you see here sort of represent a middle of the line. It's approximately 2% increase, and keeps us in line very much with the other surrounding towns that are running public preschools as well. So I don't know if you have any questions about those rates or comments.
The, I don't know, maybe we can't talk because they come right to preschool right away, but based on our current enrollment, do we know if they were looking at public school preschools versus private school preschools? Because it looks like their proposed tuition is definitely in the low end of the private, but I don't know if that's necessarily who we should be benchmarking ourselves against, because private, private might not, or private-public might not be the way to go.
Right.
But do we know where the current kids are coming from? Are they looking at public versus private, or do we know?
The parents don't necessarily share with us whether they are comparing us to local private preschools. I'm sure many of them are.
Yeah, I just don't know how big a public draw that is, that's different.
Well, you kind of think you could go to, you couldn't go to another public.
Oh, no, you can't go to another public schools preschool.
So you could even go a little higher.
Do we know what districts these are, these four districts?
So they actually, when I was doing the survey of tuitions, they actually asked it, I'm not specifically say, because, you know, they are very local towns, and, you know, to put out there, you know, which towns are charging more than we are or less than we are, something that, so I did say that I would, I talked to four different area public schools, and just said I would list a range from the lowest to the highest.
And I'll just point out that we adopted Pine Hill's rates, which had not been increased for a while. So Pine Hill is also looking at increasing their rates. And this is an area where all of our fees, we don't have a lot of revenue in what we do, but, so it's always on the back burner. So we don't always put the increases in, I think that we should, but I think this is something we need to look at, because it's basically salary-based, and our salary contract costs go up every year. So it needs, I think, needs to be a mechanism where every year it's going up at least like 2%, because that's typically our contract cost. So at least we're covering, which I think a private preschool.
I was just going to say, in my recollection, they did that anyway.
Yeah, I was going to say, my rate went up every year. So I'd like to make sure that, you know, it sort of stays on the agenda to be looked at every year, so that we don't find ourselves five years from now not having increased the rate. So do I have a motion to approve the rates as proposed? So moved. Okay. Any other discussion?
I would just echo what you said, and I would have this as 2% as being, from a financial logic, just from a prudent perspective, it's been a very optimal one we're looking at next year. It's a new project, so let's take it gently and not stand ambitions, but let's try to drive this.
Okay.
But.
Before you make the motion, effective when? Effective date?
For this fiscal, oh, for the fiscal year 17.
For fiscal 17?
Yeah, yeah.
I think you want to put that in there.
Because they've already, they've already committed.
I understand, that's fine.
Yeah, sorry, for fiscal year 17. So I'm in favor? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Terry's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Under Superintendent's report.
Which Terry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, which Terry? Sorry. Under Superintendent's report, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we included in the packet information that we shared with the Dover Warren Committee at a meeting two, two weeks ago, which happened on an annual basis, and I thought it was a productive meeting, and the committee felt the same. And then I wanted to just give you a little more information about the MCAS versus PARK decision, which the Department of Elementary and Secondary Board of Education will be considering on November 17th. In your packet with some, with some late-breaking news from Commissioner Chester indicating that he has started thinking about a thorough auction. And he's determining MCAS version 2.0. And basically, the notion behind that is it would, the MCAS assessments would be, would be adjusted, would be retooled to ensure that they reflect. would be, uh, retooled, uh, to ensure that they reflect, uh, the Common Core standards and then, uh, as well as to become an online test, similar to PARC. One of his rationales was that he felt, and I agree completely, that it's important for Massachusetts to retain control over how that assessment is developed. Right now, the PARC consortium, which originally was made up of, or created, with the makeup of twenty-three different states across the country, is now down to seven. Number have dropped out over the last year. So, my, my sense is that, uh, indicates he will announce what his recommendation is in early November, so as early as perhaps the end of next week, we'll learn what his recommendation is. Uh, that will give the board a couple of weeks to consider that. There's one last public comment, period of Monday, November sixteenth, in the evening prior to, or late afternoon, prior to the board, a meeting on November seventeenth to make their decision. So, we'll keep you, uh, posted on that. I believe his recommendation will be the MCAS. I don't know if that's what I'd predict, but I'd be wrong. So, next what's happening with that?
Once that recommendation comes out, but is there, is there a school committee action that's required for any changes at this point?
Definitely, they decided.
We're along for the ride.
We're along for the ride. If, if it's PARC, for example, if, if, if he does go with the PARC recommendation and the board, uh, agrees with that, uh, all of our grade three of, uh, eight students in, in our combined districts will, uh, sit for the PARC assessment next spring. If it's a retooled version of the MCAS, that'll take probably a couple of years at least to, uh, to retool that and have that ready. That's it for superintendent's report?
Any questions on any of the documents that were, um, we presented at Warren? Great. Okay, so we'll be on to item number four, our, um, monthly financial report for this fiscal year as of September thirtieth.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for the delay in getting this report out. You got it out late this afternoon. Uh, we were having some issues with trying to reconcile some of the numbers in our financial system. At any rate, I hope you might, you've seen it by now. If not, I can go over it. With this report, the business office presents a new format, uh, the financial report. It'll be generated monthly and included in school committee packets or if we don't have a school committee meeting, we'll email it to you individually. So, superintendent's wish that this gets done every month. At the end of the month, it's an update where we stand, which makes perfect sense. As you can see, uh, it's split up into salaries, expenditures, from an operating perspective, and then with your ODD listed down below for a total. Just a couple of quick highlights on some of the larger overages. The teacher classroom overage, uh, is basically, is definitely due to an ELL teacher, which is budgeted at point six and we're carrying that ELL feature at point eight this year, um, at Chikering. Uh, and then the teacher specialist line, and this has to do with the, um, Fine Arts Department Chair, that was created. Used to have one point eight, uh, we carried two point O, but this will get itself rectified when both the region and Sherburne pay Dover for their portion of that, of that, um, Fine Arts Chair. And I'm sorry, the five-five-five-one in the school committee expenses under expenditures, that's, uh, Dover's portion of the NASDAQ of the superintendent's search cost.
Yeah, but what else is in there? Because I don't, I think that doesn't seem right to me.
There was something, um.
What's the ninth?
It was MASC memberships, I think it was?
It's MASC membership.
Yeah.
I, I, I overlooked that.
I did too, because it was high.
Yeah, so I wonder if they're, if they're putting them in a different category?
I'll take a look at it.
Because the NASDAQ is only, you know, sub, yeah.
And maybe even fully built.
Well, no, but it's encumbered, it's encumbered.
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll find out.
We'll get the breakout of what's been charged to that line and we'll review that.
And that's not really, just so you know, we, um, so we approved the NASDAQ knowing that we were going to have a surplus in the superintendent line items. So, if you see the thirty thousand up there.
Exactly.
That money was supposed, you know, theoretically goes down with sort of cover of the NASDAQ.
Do you have any other comments from on the format or anything else? But I'll just email it, you'll give me a call.
So, let me just, so, full salaries, we have, um, right now shows two fifty-three. Now, I know some of that's money still to be spent and there's some stuff going on. Can you just highlight?
Let me do that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, the, the, the report, as you're looking at it, if you look at the budget remaining column, it's the last column to the right, under salaries. So, as of September thirtieth, it's a good time to look at salaries because, uh, all of our known salaries are, are encumbered. So, so the encumbrance in the year to date represents, uh, in total, all of our employee salaries for the year. And what this provides us with is, is a look ahead of what the variance is, where we stand in terms of salaries. But, so if you look at this quickly, you may say to yourself, gee, we're in really good shape, there's two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in that line. However, and there's always a however. If you look at, uh, there's, uh, five lines in particular. So, the curriculum leaders line, no money has been expended, nothing encumbered yet, but those are the curriculum team leader stipends. So, we, we have to assume that that money will be spent. In the substitute line, still fifty thousand dollars remaining. At this point in the year, we make the assumption that we'll spend those dollars. The professional development line, uh, again, we make the assumption that those dollars will be spent and the same with the medical health services. That's, uh, that line has not been encumbered yet because, uh, because of a, of an injury, a work job injury, and, uh, so we're working through that. That position is being filled now with substitutes and, uh, we've made arrangements there. And we'll have more information for you as we, as we go forward. But, but definitely expect that to be encumbered. And then the custodial services, you know, that's, that's for overtime costs that, again, we'll expect to, to encumber. So, when you add those all up, uh, comes out to, uh, the difference comes out to about seventy-three thousand dollars. Also to be considered is, uh, the, the, uh.
Teacher?
I'll get it. This is a senior moment, uh, the Fine Arts Coordinator's position. Janice Barry's position, uh, she's, she's teaching at point eight FTE here, but her position is full-time. So, that full-time position is currently funded here. You will be receiving dollars from the region and from Sherburne for their share of that twenty percent. That, that'll, that'll total about ten thousand dollars and, uh, and then there are some other adjustments that, that equal that going the other way. So, right now, I think it's a very conservative estimate that is about seventy-three thousand dollars in total.
In our favor.
In our favor.
What about the, um, the sped, um, the fifty thousand on the sped leadership? Is that because we have it encumbered with Marlowe?
Yes, so let me address that. Thanks, that's good. So, right now, we've encumbered the forty-two thousand and remember, this was as of September thirtieth. That was the estimate of the, let's say, Master Seven, the difference that we had talked about back in July. As it turns out, a new hire will cost fifty-six thousand fifty dollars. So, uh, that seventy-three thousand dollars that I mentioned takes into account that approximately thirteen thousand dollar difference.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you'll see that in the next month's report.
So, it's come up to sixty, so if I have thirteen, I have seven.
Yes, exactly.
Now, how about on, uh, where do we stand on out of district? Because this is always where we get a feel of, we were, this, this is what we thought we were going to have and then this is how it all turned out? Do we sort of have a, because I, obviously the sped transportation we probably haven't encumbered enough because, right? Twenty-five thousand is probably one month.
Yes, so, so we'll, we'll look at that for the next month.
Okay.
My feeling is that we, we encumber, uh, especially in special education, all known expended, and all, all known expenses at this point in time.
Right.
If something happens three months from now, uh, if, if there's a student moves up, then we'll adjust the encumbrance and then we'll adjust the balance.
But these numbers are like right now then for tuition to MASC and tuition to collaborates, we are, we have a positive variance. That's, you don't know? I'm just wondering if we, you know, we budgeted, no, 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 thirty-six? I don't remember, we'll be budgeted, but.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're much, uh, I just saw a report that came out, um, Friday and I didn't print it with me, uh, but we're much closer to being, uh, to, to what was, what was budgeted, to being anticipated to be expended.
It's not worse than budgeted at this point?
I can't tell you that right now.
Okay.
Report on that in the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do it, we could do that for the next meeting, do a full report. It's, we're not in a position where we're really concerned, uh, because we do know that we have the circuit breaker funded there.
That's a little too big of a margin.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that, you know, we'll, we'll have to spend all the circuit breaker money as a matter of fact. You know, nothing close to that right now, but we're, we're close. We are close.
Yeah, which we would expect to be, so I didn't know if we had, you know, anything totally unexpected, right?
No, not.
No, no expectation moved in, so that we know.
Okay, that's, that's what.
No, a, a couple of, of placements that happened over the summer.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on the September thirtieth financials? And thank you guys for the.
Yeah, I like the format.
So, that was the, um, the last piece that, that was taken at Warren, so that's. But if you have a question, you could just say now. Did you have anything?
No, nothing has to be on the record.
So, um, MCAS assessment time.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So, you have the MCAS report that, that should look familiar. By now, it's the same one that Pine Hill and the region would see. So, follow that same format. Some of those charts will look very familiar. One of the highlights or, or probably the most remarkable moment is that we are consistent. We have proven that we are consistently strong in some areas. We have consistently, we have an area to still work in. So, if we look at some of our data points, our grade three ELLA chart, is available publicly as well, except for the piece on the side that we added for that high P, low P, high NI, low NI. And that was a request from school committee to identify the number of students who are teetering on the edge of any of those categories. So, there are eight students, that's not a percentage, who are nearly advanced and there are seventeen students who are just inside the proficient range. And again, five needs improvement, nearly proficient, and one low needs improvement, so teetering on warning. The interesting piece in this data, um, to look at and remember is that over those four years, those are four different sets of students and those are four different tests. The other piece for you statisticians is that the N, the number of students in third grade that were tested last year for this group was eighty-one. So, we've typically had about a hundred students per grade, which means that we can easily convert the percentage to the number of students. Now that we're dropping to eighty-one percent students, one student is now one point two percent. So, as you look at these numbers moving around, uh, those are things to keep in mind. So, that was our ELLA for third grade. Our third grade math scores, again. The important piece to keep in mind as well with this data, this is all district data, not school data. So, district includes all the students here and all the students outside. And so, again, our third grade math data. It's our third grade math features low. Questions as we go, yeah?
Sorry.
It's easier to stop and do them now than.
Any shuffle of questions? So, that, that point about district and building, um, could you guide us as to how, i- in previous years and this year, how, um, how, is there any length that we should look at the numbers to, to convert one or in our minds, say, okay, how's that? Should I be doing any adjustment to my head when I'm looking at? Or is it, is it just, what do you think about that?
It's a piece to keep in mind. If you go through, all students who are in Massachusetts take the MCAS and the MCAS alt. So, if you take the MCAS, you're likely to score advanced, proficient, needs improvement, or warning. If you opt for the, um, MCAS alt, your CPI for the school is a warning number. But then within the alt, there's four levels of performance, so you can show growth over time within the alt among those four levels. I have no idea what the best two point O is going to do with any of that. So, I'm going to wait until the day after the meeting and then decide. So, fair question. So, something to think about, it'll make more sense as we move on.
Would it, uh, is it a fair, um, assumption to have the, uh, to the two thousand and fifteen data compared to the two thousand and twelve data? It's, uh, different kids, different tests, got different numbers, but that there are more out of district, sorry, out of building district scores in two thousand and fifteen than there were in two thousand and twelve? Over time, that's going to move, is that a fair insight?
That number has not changed, I think, over time, if we look here. Five. Yeah, no. All right, fourth grade ELLA, our beloved game. This also includes the fourth grade long comp. We'll go into more details on that score. And our fourth grade math scores. And in fourth grade, the testing number was ninety-three. So, those are pretty close to one percent on those. Our fifth grade ELLA score. I'm just sort of buzzing on here through the event. There were one or two students who tested in the fifth grade ELLA. Fifth grade math, one hundred and three students who tested in this one. Our science, oops, sorry, can we go back?
Uh, just give you one, one second? That, that two thousand and twelve warning thing must be.
Yeah, a typo.
That's a typo.
Oh, yes, it is. That would be a four, thank you very much. So, I'm looking at the, pretty pictures, it's the numbers.
Tremendous improvement.
Exactly.
I'll look at the fifth grade math features now. Fifth grade science. And it'll be interesting to see that MCAS will remain for science because, yeah, science is not part of the Common Core. So, there'll be different pieces. Growth in ELLA is another reasonably interesting slide. If you look at the four quadrants for lower growth and higher growth, lower achievement and higher achievement, the state indicated, um, a median SGP, student growth of fifty, seventy-five percent of the students in proficient or higher. That yellowy color is our fifth grade and the, I guess it's a gray color, the darker gray color is our fourth grade. Combined is the larger gray spot in the middle. So, our numbers are sitting right where you want in the high growth, higher achievement section. So, growth numbers are available for fourth and fifth grade only because it looks a bit old from third to fourth and fourth to fifth. See, same number in math. And then that way. So, we get all this data in the summer and we look for discrepancy reporting and then we start diving into the curriculum analysis once we get our final data. And so, the curriculum teaching piece of it looks at the item analysis. So, I've met with third and fourth grade already. Fifth grade is coming up tomorrow morning, bright and early. And we look at the results across the school for curriculum trends. Are there areas that we are not teaching as assessed by the MCAS? Are there areas that we have really, we've got some solid scores and maybe we need to peel back, or we have some room to peel back? Because there's always this interest of, there's only so much time in the day. We look at teaching methodology, we've tried different strategies, you know, we've tried different, a couple of different ways of teaching our science. So, we look at the strategies we've used there. And then we look in and we look at every student's performance. We are sometimes surprised, not always, not often. And we look at what interventions were in place for some of our students. So, if we look at our, um, Title One or Tier Two literacy supports that were in place, for example, in our Title One data, the students who were in Title One showed a higher SGP than students. a higher SGP than students who were not, which is kind of exciting for all the work that our Title I group does. And we look at special circumstances. Was there a student who had a concussion? So they didn't test. So again, that gives us a warning in our CPI number, but you can't test them. Ascribed, other complications over there. This is someone's favorite slide. It's convenient. I can't remember who it is. It's ours.
Because our cohorts are such that you can't compare across. You've got to look at how they move, and that's why I do like this slide.
There you go. It's one of my least favorite put-together.
When I leave, you can take them out.
Every time I put them together, it's a good slide, yes. So it lets you look at a class over time.
And we always know they dip in the fourth grade ELA because of the...
You've seen this show before.
Yep.
I've counted. This is the seventh time I've seen this show. All right. So we look at patterns of performance. And so for this, I'm going to zoom up to the thirty-thousand-foot level and talk a little bit about the standards. For ELA, there's four strands that we look at. There's reading, writing, language, and speaking and listening. Speaking and listening are not assessed on the MCAS, so we're really looking at reading, writing, language. In mathematics, there's the four areas listed there. And then within each, there's subcategories. And I can go through all of our data, and I can find examples in reading, in any one of those strands we did really well, and where we didn't. And I can do the same thing in math throughout the district. So there's no trend that says we need to put a lot of energy into this particular curriculum area. That has not been true over time. When I started doing this five or six years ago, there were definitely areas we needed to work in, and we have done that. We collectively, the teachers have done that, and I think that's paying off. The one area that still dogs us, for lack of a better term, is that open response piece. So our multiple choice down at the bottom of the MC, we are strong. That read the question, pick one of the letters, we do well there. That ORSR, open response, short response, we still struggle. We haven't broken through that barrier of huge success. And why, you know, we're still working on that. This year, there were a lot more blanks than we've had in the past. So blank or a zero score, which either means the student didn't put an answer in at all, or the answer was completely irrelevant. So unusual, and we can't see those. So students take the test, they walk in, they hand them in. Teachers can't say, "Honey, I know you can give me more," or you can't do that. And then we can't see any of the open responses. So I can't go back to the MCAS service center and say, "I need to see what Hans had for number seven because he got a zero." What's up with that? Sorry, Hans. All right. I can see long comps. So we can go and get a scan of the long comps if we keep it right. And we do. We go and we look at those, and look at where we did well, and this year we did some really good ones.
When you look at the open responses, there aren't any linguistic quirks that would throw students off, and that you would then...maybe you talked about the mention of the trunk at the one in the garden. I'm just wondering, are there any...there's nothing in those open responses that you thought, okay, that people may have been headfaked on that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Or even like the names. The name can be a distractor with a name that's familiar to them. We could have not seen those. And again, we can work with fifth grade tomorrow, but third and fourth, we didn't. I'll talk about the third grade open response question in just a second.
Do they talk about, so the day after, do the teachers...can they get feedback from kids? Or is that not allowed either?
After the testing window closes, you can start to talk about that. I can't go and say, "So tell me what the question was." But the kids might say, "Well, there was this question about..." And then the questions are released. So the first half of the test is released, so you can actually go online and copy if you're interested to see what the first half of every test was. And they use the half again because it's a money-saving measure, so.
But if there was a question that a large group of students really didn't understand, or do we get that feedback from them, just kind of go to the after?
It's more that we can see it when the data comes through. So there's certain questions, right, we can look at and see. The ones that we can't see, I don't know how reliable every student would be to say, you know, "Number thirty-eight on my test was..." But they may say, like, there were certain reading pieces, the kids would come back and say, "Oh, we read that in school. Yeah, we knew that story." Or that fable didn't make sense to us.
And sorry, the blanks, there's no reason to suspect it was a time issue?
No, they're untimed. They all...they've got to be done by the time the buses roll. And we do have some students who work all day.
Sure.
Okay. This is a new piece that I took the liberty of inserting, and this is that monster document that looks like this. I don't know what's following along. And the way...the easiest way to look at this is to take this piece. If you're looking at third grade only, fold the paper like this, so you only have to see the top third. If you're looking at fourth grade, look at the middle, and fifth grade, the bottom only. And then I probably should have left gridlines in, but then it works left to right, 2012, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, so it's same data you saw on your other slides. So to look at, for example, the easiest way to do this is to look at the first upper-left corner, and just four columns. So that's the third grade data for 2012. There's one open response question, three, excuse me, four short answers, and it's the average of each. So if you're looking at how we did last year, if you go all the way over to the right side, the last three columns, that data matches the 2015 data that's just been released. If you jump down below the fourth grade, you can see that third grade has one open response and four short responses. Those are each worth two. Fourth grade has four open responses, plus the writing and conventions. That's the long comp. The conventions are worth eight points. Writing is worth twelve. Perfect score of twenty is possible. And then the grade five score is underneath. I think if you're looking for a pattern in this data, and I won't walk you through every column, is that from left to right, we have continued to improve, so has the state. And if you move top to bottom, our students continue to improve from third through fifth grade. So that's a lot of numbers for...
So when you do difference, it's difference from ours versus state. So the far-right difference isn't any...it's not telling to be improvement over the last three years.
No, it's just improvement. So one case will tell you, say, "Oh, my gosh, we had a really low score on that." Well, the state might as well, so it was a difficult question. Right. It gives you a little bit of degree of difficulty on the question. The third grade teachers, we've all looked at the open response question from last year, and it was a fable.
That's really...
Yeah, this is fantastic. Excellent slide. Thank you so much. And my mind flips back to last year when, on a similar...from a similar angle, I remember there were, I think, perhaps one or maybe two science questions where we looked...where I think you looked at the difference, exactly this difference, and it stood out that on almost any other...every other...just the whole MCAS, our difference to the state was a certain amount. On these two science questions, it was...it just was not. For science, do you have this as well?
I don't have it for you tonight.
No, but I'm...
But there aren't any glaring ones like last year, yeah, which was interesting. And those tended to be, we decided, very content-related questions. I think one was about earthworms, and one was a phases of the moon. I can't remember what the second question was. It was another question, but it was an odd...so if we had a worm farm, which Mr. Wallace has a worm farm this year, so we're good with worms. Moving along. So what does this mean? Action items. The reason second year is in red on this slide is because it doesn't match your slide. And presenting to the faculty today, they caught me. We didn't bring in Empowering Writers in last year. We brought it in the year before, so my apologies for the error. So that was the second year of Empowering Writers last year. So this year, what are we doing? We're implementing these new writing and history social science units of study across the school. The idea is we're looking for efficiency. Right? If you've got a writing program, if you can weave in your history and social studies instruction, you get more time for history and social studies instruction, and it matches with your writing course. We have our science and ELA professional development, which you've heard Laura talk about. Our MCAS item analysis, grade three to five. And then many of the team goals are around test-taking strategies. So teachers write their SMART goals this year, and several of the teams, three, four, and five. And one, two, no, one to five have open response questions.
You better hurry up.
I've only got seven percent left, Cheryl. I can do it, though. And then this last two slides answer that question. About chickening only data. So if I go through and peel out just the children in this building, you can see how we did in ELA and math, in third grade, fourth grade. Any... Any questions?
I want to thank you for...this is my first rodeo, and it's really so helpful and comprehensive.
I know it's fall when I get to do my MCAS report.
Just one more question. Just on the science. The...so the action items for the science, it's squarely linked to the professional development. And do you think that the...other than the overall test-taking strategies, is it too early to ask any other threads of action points that might come out, or you think it's the PD's going to...
So the PD has designed all of this year to look at the Next Generation Science Centers of Massachusetts, which have not been voted by the Department of Ed. We're hoping now for a January vote. From there, that will help us figure out what content adjustments we need to make, if any. We will have to make content adjustments in terms of how we want to do out a new scope and sequence, and do that work through the spring into the summer, and possibly have curriculum changes for next fall. Hopefully, with the ruling from MCAS, MCAS two-point-oh, Park will give us some inclination about what the content and the testing will be done. I expect, like Mr. McAlveg said, it will be a several-year iteration before we see a change in the assessments. The important really is, what are we teaching this night, and what are they learning? This is all lovely and important. I'll take my moment, hop up in my mailbox, but it is not the most important thing we did.
Let me just gloss through.
If the choices park, the science and technology test will continue to be done in grades five and eight. And I would imagine that those tests will be upgraded. They'll become online tests as well to be online. Thank you very much.
And you think about science, and we see this in the middle school, too. The content is just volumes, and you can't teach everything. So it all depends on what question...if the questions on the test match what you...
Test match, test the first three years.
We have a great science program at all the schools, but the middle school never looks that great on science either because it just...
It's the first...it's the last three years of content being a fair game.
Yeah, exactly.
What the district is doing now in terms of the science PD and planning for the adoption of the new standards, I think is really the important focus, and not to focus on the MCAS scores. And the work they're doing now, I think, will serve the students well into the future.
Perfect. Thanks for all the work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to fiscal year seventeen capital plan. Hans, do you want to walk through? Do you want me to?
Of course.
Okay. So this is a revisit from what you saw in September, but we have had some tweaks. So let me bring your attention to, first of all, the fiscal year seventeen. We've updated sort of what's still open for fiscal year capital for facilities and management. All the projects are done. They're really just pending billing. So once those bills are paid, we don't...we won't have any open capital projects for facilities. Moving on to what we're asking for for fiscal year seventeen, we had brought forward in September three items, and we had told you that for sure we were going to do the air conditioning update and the aerial man left. There was nothing else that, after discussion, that we felt necessitated moving forward. I think in the packet that you saw go out maybe on Friday, there was an item, the fire control panel, but I think through further discussion, getting some a little more background on that, we've actually pulled that off. And that is in the capital needs plan and the onsite insight for fiscal year 2023. So we'll keep our eye on it, but it wasn't anything that we felt like we needed to continue to carry on this. So our ask for seventeen is twenty-five thousand nine hundred. The other reason why we thought we would keep our capital list a little lighter is we know that we want Ralph and his team to have time to work at the temperature issue. And so there's less projects to manage than that frees up some time. And there really just wasn't anything that we felt like we needed to move into this fiscal year. So hopefully, capital will be happy that we...our placeholder was more than what we're going to actually end up asking for. Any questions on fiscal year seventeen facilities requests? And Adrian, feel free to...
Who?
So do I have a motion to approve the two items for twenty-five thousand nine hundred for fiscal year seventeen? Is that okay? Any other discussions? All in favor? Okay. And then that's...so that's six, and then so seven is the technology, which, Lauren, if you want to just give us an update on the meeting that you had, just the highlights, and then we'll go over the capitals or the number piece.
So we do in the highlights, do you want me to focus on the seventeen ask, or...I mean, essentially, we had a very productive meeting with the head of IT and with the chickening technology specialist, Mr. Hart, and two teachers, Ms. Dial, and the assistant, who I think is the author of the technology plan, and Hans. And we went through the full plan. We did. We were reflective of where we've been, because I think the plan is now three years old, so we've been updating it each year. And so we went through where we've been and where we are this year, and what we're asking for next year. And I think the biggest takeaway for me was, there was some discussion about, you know, the...what's left of maintaining the whiteboards that are very important tools in the classroom, so that needs to be a priority. There was discussion about the continual providing the teachers with laptops, and that's a tool that I think started last year. There were more this year, and I believe there's still a few more in the plan for next year. That is, as opposed to, they have been using standalone desktops, and that this is a very important tool, given the new team-oriented planning and analysis that they do to manage instruction. And the third takeaway I...please interject if I'm going off memory here. The third takeaway I had was there is a request for, in the replacement cycle, we, I think, all had some questions as to what the strategy was there. There are and continue to be specific identification of hardwired machines. For instance, I think there may be some here in the library, there may be some in the office, but they're specifically identified, and they're very careful about taking useful...it may not be useful for the purpose that it's in now, but it might be useful for the purpose that the office needs it. So they're not replacing, you know, they're not giving a Ferrari for something that only needs a bicycle, and they're moving things around. So I did walk away pretty...very comfortable that what they were asking for was specifically identified and earmarked for a purpose, and that they were rotating equipment around in order to take something that's not discontinued but move it somewhere else. Does that make sense? The last thing was, so there is some desktop replacement requests for that reason, that specifically identified the purpose. And the last piece was, there are...there were some laptop carts that are in the request for this year. And I think...I do think the description of the strategy of these instructional carts is changing because they really need to have a full...in certain cases... is, is changing because they really need to have a full, in, in certain cases, a full classroom set of tools. Because you can't be swapping out machines and there's instructional reasons. So what they were asking for, I felt very comfortable that it was, they had a full plan connected to the curriculum and the curriculum rollout that made sense for the grade level that they're asking it in. So beyond that, any details? We have to go to the experts.
No, that's great. It sounds like it answers all the questions that I think we had at the, the last meeting. So thank you for attending that.
I will, one, I think I walked away with an impression that I do think we need to get our arms around whether we want to, whether we are marching towards a one-to-one rollout of tools. And because that's, we're doing a hybrid and we certainly do not have the funding to do that. I think it's, it's just, it's something I wish we, that going forward, you know, the technology, the teachers and us need to have a longer range plan as to where it's headed. I'll say it that way. I just, because the tools are changing, the curriculum's changing, the access is changing. And, and we're doing a great job in delivering the curriculum with what we have and what we're able to afford right now.
I'm wondering if it's possible to, to log when they're, how often they're used or when they're used and when these deficiencies might happen? So we can get a sense of.
I feel like that is something that's available for the IT group. I think they can, I think they can tell, right? When the machines have been used.
I don't know the answer.
Okay, okay. I mean, I can, you can ask Anthony, but I, I think that is something that they can.
Because it feels like we're asking for more, or wanting more technology-based learning and, and if, you know, if we don't have the one to run. I'd be curious to see how often that comes up.
I think though with the fourth and fifth grade with, when they deploy the cart this year to be in the classrooms and then we still have the carts to be used. Hopefully there's never a point in time where they feel like they can't have what they need from a, for a one-to-one basis, you know, so.
Right now they're, they're borrowing when they do need a class. So I think the tricky part of looking at existing usage is that it may not reflect what would be done if we had to set up devices.
Right, right. So if you look in the report on page eleven, there were just a few tweaks to what was originally presented in September. And if you go to the bottom, it says our capital budget request is nineteen thousand four hundred. Oh, I thought I put twenty. Okay, so that is our, what we're going to put forward to capital for fiscal year seventeen. And then we put placeholders going forward of about twenty-five thousand, just to have placeholders. And, right. So we, and then hopefully we'll still be able to have some discussions about bringing our replacement technology into the operating budget. But this is where we stand with this right now. So are there any questions on the technology piece?
Great report.
So I will ask for a motion to approve nineteen thousand four hundred dollars for our fiscal year seventeen technology hardware replacement request. Any other discussion? All in favor? Perfect. So we'll put together a packet that will be emailed off tomorrow to capital to finalize our request for this fiscal year. And thank everyone for their help. Okay, agenda number, item number eight is enrollment in class size. And I'll turn that over to Bill.
Thank you, Don. In your packet were five worksheets. And also provided was a memo that attempted to provide you with an explanation of, in detail of what these worksheets were painting a picture of, if you will. So I, I don't want to spend a lot of time necessarily repeating what's, what's on the memo, but let me, let me try to quickly give you some highlights. So the first worksheet, worksheet number one is, is an effort to provide you with an October one enrollment report that, I didn't bring it with me, that, that in effect replaces the report that you've seen the last few years. So this is giving you the same kind of data, but just in a little different format. And this is a format that I've used for many, many, many years. For some reason, can't quite understand when I started doing this. But it's, it's enrollment and projecting enrollment is something that I've just been very interested in and have taken with me to the districts where I've worked. So in, in forecasting enrollments, so what, what the first worksheet does is it gives you a history of where we've been by grade level going back to two thousand seven, two thousand eight. It provides you with a snapshot of where we are this year in terms of numbers by grade and then the details. So how many classroom sections are in that grade? What's the average class size across that grade level? And then how, how do the class size sections actually, actually break out? So everybody sees, sees that piece. And then, and then the third piece is actually projecting and really focusing on next year, what, what enrollment projections would look like for next year. And then given that we have this data, I can project out the next four years beyond that. So the methodology that I use is called the cohort survival methodology. It's simply a mathematical formula where you measure the movement of students, the number of students from one grade level to the next over a three-year historical period. Take the average of what that difference each year, each of those three years has been, and then project using that, that progression ratio or that progression rate. For example, the first grade projection for next year of sixty-six students is really a function of taking this year's kindergarten number as of October one, multiplying it by a hundred and eight percent. Hundred and eight percent is the progression rate. That's the three-year average of what the progression rate on an individual year was, starting to twelve, thirteen and moving forward. I found this to be where I've been before effective. The one grade that, that is, is really difficult is kindergarten, of course. This particular model right now simply carries the fifteen, sixteen kindergarten number out through the next five years. I know that in Dover, you've been using census numbers to project that kindergarten number, which I think is really the best data to use. And so one of the things that I'm looking at, I've developed a model that takes the census data, uses the historical numbers to then project what the, for example, the age eligible number of kindergarten students would be in one year. So I just need to collect the five years previous data and then plug it into my model, which I hope to do over the course of the, the next month. And then you'll see that as part of the projections we use when developing the budget for next year. So, so what, what this does, again, it's, it's very straightforward. The one other piece I want to highlight is, I, I also like to show what the one-year progression rate has been because you can compare that to the three-year rate. And you can, you can, I found you can, you can start seeing if there are any trends developing for the future. And then what I do is, I, for fun, I project what the enrollment might be next year if we just use the one-year rate. So you'll see that in this case, because we have, we have three grades, that the one-year rate is higher than the three-year average, kicks that enrollment projection up a little more. So, so basically, I see next year's enrollment as being fairly stacked compared to this year. You know, we theoretically would be losing fourteen students, but that's about a three percent drop. And it's, it's, it may be a sign of the demographics, but we saw a large increase in what we were projecting in kindergarten students from last year. So I think the jury's still up clearly on where that's going. And right now, if you're looking at enrollments going up, you know, the big difference is the difference between what the kindergarten enrollment is and what the fifth grade enrollment is. So that really tells you a picture of what to expect over the next five years.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
This is fascinating, thank you. So the, if I look at worksheets three and four, should the?
Yeah, yeah. You can only ask questions on one.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
So I'll just say on one though, if you remember, we had very few move-ins last year, but we had a lot the year before and we had a lot this year. So it's almost if you drop that middle year, it's a little more favorable for us. I don't know if that would be our trend, but, you know, we had projected twenty-one last year and only got eleven. Then we had thirty-five this year and we had like thirty the year before. So it's, we've had that one-year dip and in a three-year average does have an impact.
So the second worksheet is simply the same methodology buckets for the region. So that you might be interested in, in looking at that. That's really fewer information. Worksheet number three, so what I've done here, this is, I haven't done this before frankly. And so I, I thought I would do it this year. Same worksheet as worksheet number one, only what I've done is I've taken the two thousand sixteen, seventeen projections. And I've put in the detail, so assuming those projected numbers and assuming that we would carry forward the same number of sections, did the class size and section breakout for you? One thing I wanted to say before though is how Dover has done the projections in the past when you've prepared for budget is, what you've done is, is you've just carried forward the same number of students in grade one into grade two. And then I'm not sure how you come up with the in-out migration number. I think, I think it's done on a historical basis, maybe you look back the past three years and again, take an average. Again, what my, the difference, so the difference with, between this model and previous models is that this actually projects the in-migration and out-migration by grade level. So I think over time, it's, it's an easier tool to use to do number of section planning per grade and to really have a better sense of what those grade level, individual grade level numbers might be. So in this case, worksheet three, again, assuming the same sections, not changing sections yet. One thing, look at the projections for second grade. So projecting sixty-five students, kept the same number of sections as last year. The average class size is sixteen point two. So obviously the, the breakout won't be twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-two. That, I'm sorry, that's a typo. But in, under this example, it would be class sizes of sixteen, sixteen, sixteen and seventeen. Do you see where I'm, where I'm at? So that's, sorry, that's a typo. But if you take a look at this, for example, one thing that jumps out at me, looking at grade one with three sections, twenty-two kids in each section. Then you look at grade five, ninety students, five sections. If you flip those, so you go to four sections in grade one next year, you bring that average class size down for first grade. I'd rather see, well, might, this is my opinion. I'd rather see lower, smaller class sizes in grade one. And then at grade two, those class sizes over four sections would average twenty, I mean, in grade five would average twenty-two. So I, I'm not suggesting that's what decisions will be, but by creating this worksheet, it just gives you a picture of what, what the different possibilities could be.
Because if, we would have thought that we would have had to drop a fifth grade section.
Right, because there are only four, fourth grade sections.
Because we've been doing that every year now. And so this is showing us that really we probably.
But you're looking at gaining four students over the summer, right?
That's from grade one to grade two.
And from grade four to grade five.
And grade four to grade five, right. That's what the historical data show, would, would suggest. So what's interesting to me about this is that although the enrollment is going down, I wouldn't be planning in, in the budget to reduce any class sections. And, and in the end, when, when you have either declining enrollment to this, to this degree, or even increasing enrollment, I think it's helpful to really look at how things may break out, that the class sizes may break out because it doesn't necessarily mean if you have fifteen more students, you have to add a section. It's all about the demographics and, and how those numbers break out in a particular grade level. And those can change from, from year to year. In grades two and three for this year, there, there were, there were seven and eight more students than what we're anticipating. And, and that can make a difference in the class size for a year.
This is why the, the one-year rate and the three-year rate averages are so useful to have a start, a starting perspective. But when you have cycles, the rate of change is quicker than you're led to believe by going off the three-year cycle because it, it comes back. And so if, if, if we're in a particular part of the cycle when we're going to see more and more students coming back, this just prepares us for, I think, to expect a more dramatic increase in the, in the numbers as we go forward.
No, that, that's a good point. And actually, I was just thinking as you were making that point, that if, if we're looking at trends, it would be helpful on that one-year trend. For example, the movement from kindergarten to first grade. If, if you look at the, the data there, the, you go back to the thirteen, fourteen transition, there was a difference of, you know, seven students, but the next year was only one student. And then this year it jumped back up to seven.
And that reflects the census.
And looking at, in two thousand nine, it was a difference.
We, we had a lot of people in these years going to Montessori and so in private kindergarten, they come to first grade. And then we, we actually estimated for that and we only got the one kid. All of a sudden we're like, where did that combination go?
Yeah, so what I found.
So we started grabbing that data and it did, it disappeared.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's very useful. Again, it's, it's data that, that helps inform some of these numbers. But remember that, you know, the progression rate from K to one historically takes into account those students who are moving from a private kindergarten into first grade because it does account for that in and out migration. And then worksheet four, what's this? Oh, so when I, when I came in, in early July, I, I took, I took the, I plugged in the data into, into the model and, and using, and did my own projection for fifteen, sixteen. So that's what this is. It, it's just.
So we would have been four forty-two, we're at four sixty.
Yeah. So even mine, you know, was.
Well, that's because, I mean, we have, I mean, it's the number we have.
Right. But, but the Dover projection was even fewer than the four forty-two that was used as of June first.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, there are anomalies that happen by grade level every year. My goal, I think a projection here has been successful if, if the projection is within minus three to plus three percent. And then the fifth one is, oh, this is just the June first. This is the format that, that we've used.
So that four thirty-six is our projection.
That was our projection, yeah. This is great because we've never had projections before.
Hopefully we can continue it on.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, as, as a district or as a school committee, do, do we have formal input from community members who work in the little state sector? To help us build that? Because that's, that's just the other element, as I said. If the, if the present or the, the very near future. Because that's just the other element, as I said, if the present or the very new future is different to the recent past, then we're going to be caught by surprise. But I know we have had some...
In the past, I know superintendents have had a couple of people who fed them sort of like, what's the real estate market doing, so...
Yeah, this model does not take into, does not account for, you know, the number of building permits that are pulled in any one year and look at a historical basis, and it doesn't, it hasn't looked at potential new developments or new developments that might be out there. Not that there's a lot of that happening in Dover or even Sherwin, but again, there will be, that's where I think that one-year rate and then looking at recent trends can help inform that, but we can certainly reach out to the real estate community to see if they're seeing differences.
Anecdotally, having such brilliant data for me to even say that, which is silly, but anecdotally, there've been so many more families moving in who had enquired youth sports organization over the summer compared to the last four years, just by a multiple of what we normally have. We had people coming in August and July saying, can we sign up? Can we sign up? To a huge level, so...
Which makes sense of what you guys, it's not show up here in August, though.
Or the first day of school.
That's a great point, thanks. And so the youth groups might be a source of anecdotal data, too. So that's great, yeah.
Great, any other questions on enrollments? And so on a, what is our plan? Normally, we would just get a quarterly, I think, enrollment. I mean, we get our final one and then like another one closer to the budget.
Yeah, so I'll have additional information that will go with the first pass of the budget in December.
Okay.
I have not done in the past monthly enrollment updates.
Yeah, no, and we've gotten away from that, so that's...
Yeah, I would think after November, the next update would be right in early February, when we would get census data from the town on age-eligible five-year-olds, what that number is, and we update if we needed to at that time kindergarten numbers, and we have a better sense of where those were going. What I will do also, there's some other enrollment data, for example, the breakout of the pre-kindergarten enrollment. So we have data that, and I'll put it in writing, indicates how many students are attending Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the morning program, or the full-day program, how many are attending a half-day program. Wednesday is just a half-day program. There are eight Metco students in the district. We'll show you where they break out by grade level. There are seven, right now, there's 78 in district, 78 students in district on an individual education plan, and then there's eight pre-K to five out-of-district students. But that'll be part of a, we'll break all that.
Okay. Well, actually, that segue is nicely into item number 10, which is any budget guidance that the committee has before these guys go and start building the budget. And I think enrollment is an important thing to look at, so we can sort of forecast right now that, you know, it doesn't appear that we would be...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I would assume, as a layperson, that number of sections has a big influence on the budget. Is that true and not true?
Yeah.
So that's maybe we really need to...
Right, because it's, right. But they'll build that, but it looks like preliminarily from the enrollment data that we've seen, had we not seen that for this big increase that we had in new children this year, we would forecast that we would have to drop another section.
For the incoming.
For the incoming, but I don't think that's going to be the case. I mean, we've gotten used to having, there's a grade that just keeps dropping, dropping, and I think that would probably pretty, hopefully, we stabilized a little bit.
We need to add some.
Exactly.
Right, if someone needed to add.
Right, that we'll look at the forecast and decide, you know, these guys will decide.
Yes.
Yeah. But, you know, our guidance is, you know, we're comfortable, you operate within the range. Our enrollment range is 17 to 22.
Okay.
So that's the guidance that you usually...
Just, there's a couple of grades that are at the 20 to 22 range already, so even you might grow in the, let's say there's two, just take, add one, so no, or, and I think it looks like the fourth grade is going to be five sections anyway, so I'm not, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm looking at the, it was first and second grade that are each at 20 to 21 kids, they're at the cap. So I think it would be prudent to probably add as you're building it.
Keep in mind that those projections do include migration in, right? So it's already incorporated some increase.
But knowing that in, with the exception of last year, so you're right, I mean, I realize that every year can be different, but we have had two surprise years, with the exception of last year, so I...
Well, it's always easier to add and take away than later try to add.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that's what you have to sort of, right, weigh. I don't know if anyone had time to think about it, or if you have any other, you know...
Just the plus, adding another grade of plus, which is obvious, and I do wonder on how we're budgeting preschool. It sounds like we budgeted gross of tuition reimbursements. Is that what we would propose to do again?
Because this is outside, right. Well, then, so we did it gross last year because we said we were going to sort of like build our revolving fund and not allocate any expenses to the revolving fund. Normally, you could take something and charge it to the revolving fund, but we didn't want to do that in year one, because it's good to have a base to pull from, as you say, the playground, if we need to. So I would say they can, you guys can look it over, but that's...
How does Pine Hill do that? What do they do with their tuition reimbursements?
They allocate maybe one or two of the aides to the revolving funds.
Okay. I just, in my opinion, I think it's a lot of money to have off-budget. That's just my opinion, so I'll leave it at that, and you guys can play around with it in the size group.
Right. Remember, we only budgeted $20,000, so it is, they're very, very conservative in the budget, so that made sense at that point. We're in a different situation now, so that's something to look at. And I think it's just good with a fresh set of eyes to sort of look and see if there's, you know, how we do things or how we budget things, if there's a different approach or such, you know, versus just, this is where we are and just roll it forward. But it seems, I mean, as far as our big light items, I feel like we're doing a great job on the major maintenance. I mean, I think we've been playing around with that, and I think we have a good number that the town's been willing to give us in our operating budget. I think we've been managing that well, you know, a report to sort of show the items that we take care of, because we have a lot more flexibility to address problems as they come up or be forward on some issues. So I really think that that's a place we'll want to keep that focus. And I don't know if there's any other needs. So this is, this is the time, too, if you have other needs, to bring them forward at the beginning of the budget process, to come to us, because then, like I said, it's harder to do it after. Gentlemen, anything? No? Okay. So, time to update. Do you have anything you want to add before, so we go through the presentation? I think there were, probably not, right? Okay. So Brooke and I think Lauren and Adrian put together a report that was modeled after the report the middle school did during their proposal. So which one of you guys going to walk through it?
It's going to be Lauren's going to.
Okay, yeah.
Where is Paige Turner? Is it over here? So this is what, a proposal that we would like to, hopefully at the end of this, we would make a motion to authorize funding to have a feasibility study, so that we can get our arms around what the possibilities are and try to put some numbers around what the cost for those solutions might be. So we have an outline that we'll walk through and talk a little bit about the building history, just remind us of the floor plan, a slide from the middle school that we slowed about, I mean, sorry, that we stole, about the research about this, you know, the effective temperature on learning, and then we did crunch some numbers to look at what happened at Chikering over, specifically at the end of August, the first five weeks of school. So, building history, that building opened in September, actually, of 2001. It was originally engineered and designed for AC, but the AC was pulled out of the plan for budget-saving purposes. There were no adjustments otherwise to the design in the building. As we understand it, there is no, it was not set up for air conditioning when it was built, so it's not like there's ducts in the ceilings that we can just plug a machine into. There, as I understand, the windows were really selected, thinking that there would be air conditioning in the building. It's anecdotal, but we think these windows are not even, they're not installed and manufactured anymore. So the windows, the fact that we can't open the windows has, is an issue in this building. And there, we are listening to ongoing complaints of the heat buildup in the classrooms during hot periods, especially when it's humid outdoors. This is just a map of the Chikering School. There are approximately 30 classrooms, we've got other, there are areas in the building that are air-conditioning, air-conditioned, so I think we're all familiar with the layout of the building. Again, this is stolen from the middle school presentation when they made their argument for air conditioning at the middle school. There is research out there, we would update that research and get current with it, but there is research out there that would show a detrimental link to hot temperatures in So what is the Chikering indoor air? Our air control systems do capture the ambient temperatures in the classroom. We, thank you, Hans and our tech personnel have given us loads and loads of data that is captured by hour, by day, going back in time. So we analyzed what that data capture was and focused on, you know, June, we have it for June, July, and August, and during school hours. But we have the data for all hours, which is interesting if we can make a correlation between what's happening inside the building to outside the building, even on days that aren't school days, it could be a relevant exercise. There are, there will be times in the data that the data wasn't captured, so we're just, it's a technicality. Created some reports that, for purposes of just quick telling a story, we highlighted the data given these temperature ranges, so 70, kind of picking 78 as where it starts to get uncomfortable in the rooms and having an impact. We banded the temperature ranges, 78 to 80 is in yellow, 81 to 84 in gold, and red is above 85. Just for argument's sake, we did show where it got close to 78, being 77, because it's interesting in the data. That's an example of what the data reports look like. And we looked at it for the first week of school, second week of school. If you want to zoom in on the second week of school, you can see that. Now, this is, you know, this is capturing the data by hour, but those two particular days, there were a significant number of rooms that were very, very hot. Third week of school, it's starting to cool down. There's the second to the last week of school in June, and that's the last week of school in June. This is a, this is collapsing the hours, so this is just capturing the maximum temperature between 8 and 3. You can assume that it's somewhere between 1 and 3 o'clock that it's being captured, and color coding it. So the classrooms go across the top, the dates go across the side, and it's capturing those, the last week of August and the month of September, and that's, the rooms are starting on the first floor on the left and going across to the second floor. So you can see it's not just a second-floor issue. It could be a wing issue, it could be the exposure, but, because I'm, those are just, the room numbers are up on the top. So you can see, again, those real hot days in, right here in September, across the school, those are uncomfortable days in those classrooms, where we have gaps, these are the days that the data wasn't captured. So in, just to bring kind of some closure to it and to summarize it, we captured the number of rooms that were hotter than 78 degrees those first five weeks of school. These are the numbers along the side, we captured 28 rooms. So these rooms up here are the ones that, all the rooms on these five particular days were hotter than 78 degrees, that being kind of the threshold of when does it start to get uncomfortable in the rooms. So that gives you the number of rooms. The next slide gives you the percentage of rooms in the Chikering that were hotter than 78 degrees for that first five weeks of school, and you can see that, your percentage, the data there. And we summarized it on the next slide. It's the same information, but, so only three classrooms were, well, suffice it to say that it's something like 50%, 50% of the classrooms were hotter than 78 degrees 50% of the time in the month of, in those first five weeks of school. Just a slide to say, is 2015 a fluke as far as the outside temperatures? So we're, this is for Dover, I do believe it is the Norfolk Airport where we're capturing the data. This is, this comes from the National Weather Service. So this is 2015, May through October, number of days greater than 82, 85, or 90, you can, and it gives you the historical. So it is slightly hotter in 2015, but with the exception of last year, there's, it's not an irregular year. And so we have loads of data that can give us historical data that we hope to be able to kind of look at the big correlation between what's happening inside to what's happening outside. In summary, after looking at this, I would suggest that there is excessive classroom temperatures, that it was frequent, persistent, and widespread in the first five weeks of this academic year. We would presume that this does have an impact on the health, wellness, and learning of our students. And given this and the anecdotal feedback that we're receiving from those in the building, we would propose that we appropriate money to have a feasibility study to study what the possible solutions might be and the cost of the solution. Are there any questions?
A plus. Excellent work.
Excellent.
A great summary you guys pulled together, and I think since our last meeting, what we were able to find out from the town is that we can use current year operating funds to fund a feasibility study, so we can get started on this after tonight. And I think this supports that, and...
Do, have you had any idea of the range?
Yes, we do. So do you want to speak to that, or you want to...
So there were two quotes to do a study. One was, they were quite different in terms of cost. One was for $9,500, and the other was for $18,000.
And I think, was there a third one that came in today?
I thought it was, I thought it was, did come in today.
Okay, okay.
Was there a significant difference in services that were provided for the college?
Well, it, it was difficult to really tell because, because the estimate was not based on a specific RFP, you know, it was a general description of.
Yeah. Same size.
Here's what I wish it was.
But it gives us an idea of, I think, the range that we can say we.
Not to exceed.
Maybe not to exceed. Exactly. And then we'll actually put together a request for service, listing what we want in the study and then send that out and make quotes based on that. But it was waiting for us to be able to move forward tonight, since we don't need to get until this.
But summer, no.
Exactly.
Great.
So I think the, the motion would be that we would appropriate up to $20,000 to fund a feasibility study using current year funds either in our operating, once we get a little bit closer to see what we have in operating, but knowing that we can fall back on the building funds, so that we have funds one way or the other to cover this need for this year. Do I have that motion?
Dawn, sorry, is the, should the motion just be to take it from the building fund or is the town happy for us to do it as you just mentioned it?
Yes, no, I'll, we'll say it as I said it then.
Okay.
You may want to use the word authorize the expenditure? Because you can then, you have flexibility of where to take that money from.
Okay.
When it comes to that. So if you authorize the expenditure not to exceed $20,000 for the purpose of conducting a temperature control feasibility study for the Chikering school?
Send it.
Second?
Send it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'd say thank you for valuable support.
So all in favor? Okay, so we will put the office in charge tomorrow, well, not tomorrow, but hopefully.
Good on that.
So putting together sort of a, you know, a brief request for service, and my guess is we have something from the middle school, again, that we could just sort of not recreate the wheel and send out.
The only thing on the middle schools, I don't know if they ever needed to look at the window issue, so.
Which had some window issues, I don't know if they would have seen. But we wouldn't get to that level of, you know, we would say, come in and tell us that we need to, we need to have options to cool the building.
Okay, as long as next.
Yes.
In scope, that's fine.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, perfect. So now we're on to the consent agenda, which tonight is only the approval of the minutes from September 22nd. Anyone see any edits, leations? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Also in your packet, you have the regional school committee minutes of September 8th, the Sherbrooke School Committee minutes of September 15th, the Dover budget warrant, Dover warrants budget guidelines, so you can get a feel of what they're asking for. I should have pointed that out when we talked about the budget, but that's their guidance. And I would like to solicit any comments about the draft of the school calendar. This is on the agenda to be approved on November 10th, so if you have questions, concerns, bring them up now, then administration has those and can vet them and figure out where they go for with what is presented at November 10th.
So just very quickly, the draft that was in your packet really follows the same format as this year, with just one exception, this draft offers the possibility of two dates. So, so there's a full professional development day that's in our calendar. The last number of years that full professional development day for staff has been scheduled the Monday after the Thanksgiving holiday. Next year, there is a set of dates, October 10th is Columbus Day, October 12th is Yonk Kippur, so there's that day in between. So what you see in the calendar is the possibility of that full professional development day occurring on October 11th. We've also have that on November 28th. So it's not intended to mean there'll be two of those dates, it's either or.
So either the 11th or the 28th.
Either the 11th or the 28th. I can tell you that the recommendation coming from the leadership team that has looked at this closely, and they've been very thoughtful about, about this, looks like November 28th to keep that the same, is the preferred date, which is a little different than what the conversation was earlier on. But, but when that, when that goes out, when that recommendation goes out in a couple of weeks, we'll provide the rationale for that, for that recommendation.
So any comments on?
I'm sorry, just one other, kind of, there is one other quart to this calendar, and that is that in 2017, I believe we're talking about 2017, but January 1st falls on a Sunday, so that is a, that's a federal holiday, so federal holidays that fall on a Sunday are celebrated on Monday. So the return to school for that Christmas break would actually be Tuesday and not Monday, January 2nd.
Okay. All in all, what's that?
Yep.
Okay. So we do have a joint meeting on November 10th, and I think Bill has listed in a memo the items that we have thus far scheduled for that meeting.
Was it in November 10th?
November 10th, yes. And then our next regular scheduled meeting is our budget presentation meeting, which is in the morning of December 15th at 8:15.
Does that happen here?
No, downstairs in the.
Okay, it is 8:15, not 8.
8:15.
Okay. On the November 10th meeting, is this the only policy revision that is anticipated to come forward?
We are, and we're only doing that when it was assessed, because we were putting a hold on all policy, just with everything going on.
Okay.
But we do have a plan for wellness.
I know.
Yeah, okay. If that was your.
With regard to the educator evaluation system, last year, in its first year of implementation, there was, I think it was a state mandated reporting of the results that went through DESI, and then we, at some point in our meetings, received what the outcome was, with obviously the, just, you know, numbers, like high-level numbers. Is that something that we can have an update to this year? And I don't know if that would be appropriate for this November meeting, since we're looking at district goals.
So we, every district is required to report the teacher ratings at the end of each year. They're part of an upload that goes to the, to the State Department. They have not released that data yet, so as soon as, when they release it, it will become public and we'll, we'll figure it into the schedule somewhere.
Okay.
So.
And Dawn, we're school visiting.
Oh, yes. Yeah, November 3rd, right?
Yeah, looking forward to that. May I just ask if everyone expects to.
Oh, the 10th? Yes, yes.
It's a morning food.
We've got lunch afterwards.
Yes.
And hopefully, flash is on there and maybe.
I'll have to put it on my daughter's account.
Yes.
Look in the schedule.
This is a good one, election day.
What is the, could I just ask what the K-12 assessment report is?
That's looking at sort of all the MCAS over K-12, so you guys can see what the, how the high school and middle school do, that, you know, the region can see how the elementary school does.
That's great.
And I think there's some overall stuff on some of the other high school testings.
EP testing.
Oh, okay, great.
So just a broad overview, sort of have them look at the district and pretend like they're a K-12 district and sort of what that would look like.
Baby steps.
That's helpful.
Exactly.
So we will, we actually have an executive session on the agenda tonight, so I will poll the committee to go into the executive session for purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. That will end the open meeting and the agenda, so we can just poll.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you all.